Okay, it's 4:00 PM and at this time I will call to order the special meeting of the Salina City Commission for February 29th, 2016, and we'll have a roll call, please.
Mayor Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Okay, at this time, we'll ask all who are here and able to stand and join in the pledge of allegiance, and we'll follow that by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as this is a special meeting, we'll move right into administration.
Item 3.1, Resolution Number 16-7328, authorizing the mayor to execute an addendum to modify the architect agreement with SFS Architecture, setting forth the terms and conditions to transition from a CMAR project delivery approach to a design bid build project delivery approach and provide compensation for SFS's work on partially designed alternatives which were eventually deleted from the project.
Okay, thank you. We'll get a staff report from Steve Hardisty.
Sure, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. You were hand-delivered the legal portion of the addendum. Your packet had the proposal in it that you saw over the weekend, but this addendum was prompted by several decisions over the last three to four weeks. The change in delivery method from the CMAR to the design bid build definitely had a change in the contract. The CMAR approach, or the CMAR was listed in SFS contract numerous times during that wording, and it needs to be changed to reflect the new agreement. Their role without a CMAR will change slightly. After I'm done, you can ask SFS how that role might change in this design bid build delivery. They can address that more. It also includes the deletion of several alternates that were not fully designed but part of the original design efforts. These include the expanded lobby, the upgraded facade and mezzanine. The change in the design from the four-by-two design to the current three-by-three design that was approved in a previous city commission also is a key factor in this. This change was prompted from input from the private stakeholder meeting in January. The key changes include a smaller gym space, larger lobby, more parking, and a larger drop-off lane. Other considerations in the addendum, there's a new timeline that is listed. Be happy to go over that if you need to. Also, rates for the additional services in the addendum are hourly rates for the differing trades as per the SFS contract that we've had with them. So they'll take the hours times the different trades to get the additional services portion of that contract. So if we go over the fiscal notes, their professional fees will change slightly from 7.95% to 7.731%. In the CMAR approach, there's differing fees. That excludes the construction manager pre-construction fees and costs and the construction manager fees that were in Article 11.1. The 7.95 to 7.731 is an equal fee structure, just different math to arrive at it. Additional services portion is a lump sum fee of $85,650. The compensation for the preparation of the alternates deleted is $53,400. City of Salina has received funds from the community group to cover these costs. Staff has identified the following options, recommends option one, that would be to approve Resolution 16-7328. Will also offer option two of not approving or giving us additional research and reporting back to you. Stand for questions at this time.
Okay, questions from staff?
I'm quite concerned about overall cost of the project, and I was just curious during this process. I'm assuming that there's an effort to do value engineering and other cost-saving measures as part of the design, is that correct?
Oh, yes, yes. That is reflected in their additional services. Value engineering is one of the key aspects that we'll be working on right away, and so SFS would be definitely one of the major players in the value engineering efforts.
Can you give me just a brief rundown on how that process works?
Through Development has identified, I don't know, Mike, maybe 75 different value engineering items.
At least.
And so we go over those as a team.
Who's on that team?
The team would be Through Development leading, City of Salina staff, SFS staff, and we go over and see the pros and cons of the different value engineering.
Would there be anyone from the other side?
The private stakeholders. We took their, they probably had, what, Mike, 15 different? No, excuse me, there was 24 different value engineering items that they brought towards us, and so we incorporated those into the 50 or so that Through Development got.
I'm not sure there, I would characterize them as value engineering, from the value engineering perspective.
Ideas.
We're trying to cut costs. Some of those items didn't necessarily cut costs.
Yeah, but we did take 24 of their items and put them into the package.
So, but no one necessarily needs to be there in order to answer questions or comments about particular value engineering elements?
Well, we have reached out to different people and subcontractors, different experts in the industry. I know there's a HVAC discussion going on right now to see which is the best method for, so we're not excluding anybody in the value engineering area for sure. Does that answer that?
This may be more of a question for the architects and designers, but I think maybe just to get overall opinions on this. At the last meeting, it was kind of stated that one of the reasons for the, what seemed to be an elevated cost was that we were designing to a program and not to the budget. And so my question is, and it's mainly, as I said, for the architect, is generally by getting rid of the CAMR before we had any sort of price, isn't that generally where, wouldn't we normally get a price and then do the value engineering to bring the price down? And how is that going to work now when normally the, we almost need to get a bid from the general before we can really start looking at any sort of reductions on whatever that final bid might be? How do we?
Quite honestly, with the CMAR process that we had before, the contractor, general contractor as the construction manager is with the team early, and so early on, they actually start looking at the cost estimation as the design develops. So, and there's some level of value engineering all the way through. You look at something and say, well, that's going to be way too expensive, you know, things we talked about as an alternate or not an alternate, so there's a form of that. But when you get closer to the end and you get closer to having a more, better, more solid estimated cost, at that point, you say, okay, how far do we think it is off from what our budget is? And then at that point, you're into a more formal value engineering phase in which you, we have a list of, I don't know, 60 items or something like that. You go through those, and every project are different, and you look at them and say, okay, do you need this type of light or that type of light? This type of flooring, that type of flooring? Do you need to do this or do that? And you go through all those and weigh the value to the cost. And so today, with the change to now to a kind of finished design, bid and build it, the way that works is, is that we're, the role of our owner's rep is probably more dominant than it even would be before, but the role of the designer is, is as we go through those, if we have questions about cost and value and impact of that, we rely on the designer to help us with that as we go along as well.
Okay, because, I mean, I know that there are items, and somebody mentioned, maybe we do fluorescent bulbs instead of LED. Well, if we want to try and get the construction price as low as humanly possible, there are probably a lot of really inexpensive ways to do that, but in the long term, it ends up costing us, and I assume HVAC and everything else. I mean, a low-efficiency system is a lot cheaper to put in than a high-efficiency system, but, you know, we're told all the time, and I think even in people's homes, they notice if they put in a high-efficiency unit, it ends up paying for itself.
Sure.
Those factors are being weighed.
Okay, 'cause I just, I mean, I think there is the concern that it's like this thing, you know, the construction cost is a concern, but the city is going to be on the hook for long-term, not just the maintenance cost of this and upkeep, but paying the utility bills and everything else. So, I mean, there are cost considerations that go beyond what the cost of construction is, and I'm just concerned that we just don't go to building this the cheapest way possible, thinking that that's, that it's the best thing to do. I think that value engineering is, that's going to be critical, and I just, I don't know what kind of commitment we have to designing to a program that says, this is what we want to look at long-term and so on versus the budget is $9 million, so we have to do everything we can to do, can do to keep it under $9 million.
Yeah, we're looking at efficiencies. We're also looking at, like, for example, lighting, return on investment. If you go, what is the cost of an LED fixture versus what would be considered to be a fairly high-efficiency fluorescent? And what's the return on investment for having that and using that to a way? So absolutely, those are the same questions we're asking with each and every one of those.
I think it's possible to have a high-level quality of project, but you can have a less expensive project if you take the labor into consideration. Their labor rates are going to fluctuate too, from company to company as well, and so that might be a place where you gain some savings. I went ahead and called another fieldhouse today. It was the Wichita Sports Forum. I don't know if you're familiar with that one or not, but I talked to the general manager down there, and it's a facility that has 150,000 square feet, much bigger, and with a $14 million price tag. And if you do the math, it comes out to $93 a square foot. And, you know, of course, it's not going to be as nice as the one that we're proposing. I just keep coming back to the fact, though, that we ought to be able to do something really nice for something that's not quite $180 a square foot. I, you know, I heard the, you know, the management team last meeting say something like, well, you know, you can get a lesser-priced fieldhouse, you just have to lower the scope or change the scope.
And I think that's what we're doing.
Well, I don't know that we are. I'm thinking that the, that's why I brought up the labor cost. I think the labor cost will probably take care of some of that concern, but it's just, for the life of me, I can't figure out why we're so much different in cost and...
Commissioner, real quick, we don't know that we are. And what I mean by that is, is again, we can look at that one, and we have to break it all down. We learned in the Indianapolis facility, there, what appears to be the entrance to the facility, there are two private facilities that were bought differently. The land is additional cost, and the site improvements were an additional cost, so they didn't go into that. We don't know on this one, but what all we know at this point, remember, is we do not have a completed design, and all we knew when we made the decision is what the cost estimate was based on some pieces already being bid, but most of it not being bid yet and using cost estimations, which are generally going to be pretty liberal at this stage of the game. So we don't know, and especially now that we've changed into a design bid build, we very well may see cost, and we should see, if we're in the same construction region, we should see final costs that are pretty close to that, but we really won't know until we actually go through the bidding process, and that's what'll tell us. And I'm as, hey, I'm as curious as anybody and as anxious to get to that stage.
They did, they did do the design bid build process as well, and they, and star bonds were part of the funding mix for that one as well. So, and they had five bids.
Yeah. One of the things, for example, if you look at, when you took away the enhanced mezzanine, we have masonry, but only about 16 feet up along the bottom. The rest of some, at this point, is some form of steel. Very few windows, per se, and there are special-type windows that doesn't allow the glare in, but very few of those, and as we value engineer, those, some of those will probably come out as well. You're not going to have a whole lot of difference between facilities at this point. Now, if you said, we just want steel around the whole thing, and we don't, we don't really care about the aesthetic at all, we can get to that pretty easily. I don't think you'll be satisfied with it in the downtown. But when you really look at it, and when you look inside these facilities, you're not going to find a lot of differences here. So I think from a design perspective, we're going to whittle through most of those things. It's just going to be about what the bidding climate gives us when we get there, and I am very anxious to get there.
Okay. Speaking of anxious timelines, can we talk a little bit about, kind of zero in on timelines a little bit? Because we're a bit off our Gantt chart, and I want to, I want to address it in the terms of, these design changes came about 11th hour. What are we going to do to make sure that, as Commissioner Hardy was talking about with value engineering, we allow Through to represent us? We have staff representing us, and we let the architects and that group work together. Do we have a cutoff date for when we're going to take input, and then we're not going to take any more input because we're ready to go? Otherwise, this thing's going to drag into summer.
That's a good question. Let me, let me say too, and this may be a question that our designers can help us with, there's a difference between value engineering, per se, and major or significant redesigns of the facility. And what I mean by that is, is the concept that you approved last time, if, when we talk about value engineering, we're talking about lights and signage and walls and flooring and most of that, a little bit of other stuff, moving stuff around, but we're not talking about room dimensions anymore, things like that. If we get into room dimensions and adding HVAC to places that didn't have it before and those types of things, you're into more of a deeper design, I believe. That will delay us entirely if we go any further with that, in my opinion. But I think that's a good question for designers, because we, they have to start running like a gazelle now with regards to the design, otherwise we won't meet our timelines. But I think that's a good question to defer to our designers. Steve, if you want to go ahead and have them come up.
Mayor, Commissioners, I think Mr. Gage addressed that exactly correctly. I think as long as we know the general design direction, we can move ahead with that. Some of these value engineering options are more smaller decisions that aren't going to impact our workflow all that much, but we would like to have even those value engineering ideas covered here within the next, you know, next two weeks or so, just to make sure that we can stay on track. But I would anticipate that we can address all those questions, all those that list of value engineering ideas here in the next two weeks or so.
Okay, and if we, if we start coming up with new alternates, that will slow down design, because they haven't been thought through conceptually or with any detailed design. So if we say, well, what about this as an alternate? What about that? Depending on what it is, the alternates have to be created. You can't bid those unless their design is alternates, and so you're going to add time and cost to the design as well.
Okay, thank you.
So would you say, sir, by the 15th, we'll have a starting place?
I would say that we should have all the decisions made at that, at that point. Correct.
It gives us some...
Is there anything else that would impact that timeline? Anything on a critical path that, I mean, we've got the sewers relocated, I'm assuming that's going to be done by April 1st. Is there any other things, funding, I mean, other than, other than a, and I don't know that it'll be a problem, but petition period for, petition period for charter ordinance will be up, but we're not even, I mean, if the price comes in different, it may not even have anything to do with it or other factors even. Is there any, other than those two items, is there, I mean, the money's all, private money's all in place, ready to roll? Everything else is dialed in?
Yeah, we believe that by the, by the time that you're ready to move forward with construction, that your, the private sector money, you have certain commitments still and certain dollars that are in, but they have a plan to bridge the dollars so that the commitments that are made over maybe two years or three years, we can bridge the cash so that that's in place for you. We have every reason to believe that will be in place. I think the design, anything that causes any type of true redesign is what can slow it down. We can finish our smaller item value engineering here probably this week. I think we plan to do that and then move it forward. But yeah, if we, if we keep one more week, another week, another week of delay, 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 we're that close. It's kind of funny, it's, each week added on, you know, creates three or four weeks before you know it. So we're to the point, we can't even add any more of those weeks. So I think we're very, very, very close that anything else would push it to, you know, push it further out. And we can't say for sure, you have to do it by this day, or you can't button it up by winter, because we don't know if we're going to have a winter like we had, have had this year so far, or a winter like we had maybe a couple winters ago when we had two one-foot snows. We don't know.
Well, we might have, I mean, that might not be our problem. Our problem might be we had, we have a June like we had last June.
Could be, absolutely. You never know. You never know what the weather's going to hold, so you presume it could be, not worst-case, but pretty typical, which means there's going to be some interruptions. So, yeah, we need to get started as soon as we can.
Have we, has there been any consideration of, if it's not started by X date, we may, we may look at just saying it's not worth starting?
There's been consideration of that. I think as we get closer, we finish the design, we know we can't move quicker than what your charter ordinance date is.
Right.
Presuming we're under the second charter ordinance. If we're not, I'm not sure it'll be a factor, but if we're not, no big deal. But assuming we're following that, we'd stay within that depending on the price of the facility. So at this point, no, but I think they need to, they'll know more as they get further into the construction documents, and then we'll know where we're at with that.
Okay.
But if there's delay getting to the construction documents, because we keep changing this and changing that, it's going to be a problem.
Well, I know. I mean, we've kind of lost our, if we had any comfort to begin with, I mean, we're shooting for beginning of April, and so now we're beginning of June, so nervousness is beginning to set in, but I think, yeah, we need to get this, we need to get this going. How long would the bidding process be then? Are we going to do, do we have a normal bidding process, or would it be abbreviated in any way? What are you looking at?
I think it'll be pretty typical. We, we've talked about with the owner's rep, pre-qualifying the bidders, the general and the subs, which that takes time, and like I said, what that means is just making sure you have those that have worked on that scale of, that type of project. There's not, I wouldn't expect, be surprised if any generals would be cut from the whole pool, from the whole region. I wouldn't expect necessarily that to be the case. The subs, the best example is if you've only done sidewalks, you probably shouldn't be, you know, pouring the floor for the whole building and that type of thing. So you just want to make sure that they've done that type of work, but we'll be positioning to do that. And then, of course, the design plans have to be complete, and the specifications have to be complete. And then you're looking at a pre-bid meeting situation, and that's really important on a project, to make sure everyone's under the same assumptions if they have questions before they bid, because you want to be sure you have clean bids. And then your soliciting, soliciting bids is going to take, I don't know, three weeks, typically somewhere in the three, three to four weeks timeframe to get the bids back. We have to look at them, depends on how clean and how many we have, and then we make a recommendation to you. Once it's in front of you, you have the role of approving a bid, and so if it's a clean low bid that meets specs, it's easy. If it's not clean, it's a little bit harder. But assuming it's clean, then it's, at that point, once it's awarded, it's just a point of signing the contract documents, getting the performance bonds, that kind of stuff in, and then notice to proceed.
Okay. Okay, well, these, these projects are tough. I mean, it's, I've been not doing the same type of research that Commissioner Hardy has, but I have kind of followed the rock chalk park that Lawrence has gone through, and they, they struggled with sort of a public-private partnership on a fieldhouse there, and they ran into some, some difficulty. So these are not easy projects when you do public-private partnerships, and apparently rec centers and fieldhouses are to boot. So, anyway, appreciate some of the hurdles that we're hitting, and hopefully we hit that schedule. So, is there any further questions for staff at this time? Okay, we'll open it up for public comment then at this time, and please just give your name and address, and we'll go from there.
Yes, I'm John Price, 1305 Wayne, and my question was on this funding. There's parts that I don't quite understand, that's what I came to ask. On the legal notice, it was February the 19th, 2016, in the Journal, just came out last Friday. It says, I'll skip through the KSA 131024A, and providing substitute and additional provisions on the same subject relating to the general improvements of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying for the improvements and repealing character ordinance number 38. So this is 39 that I'm reading here. And there's only one change between 38 and 39, that's what I wanted to ask. A, it says streets and construction will be $1 million. B, bridge and vi-docks will be $1 million. Public parks will be $1 million. D, public buildings will be $1 million. Storming and water drain systems will be $1 million. And waterworks and sanitary sewer systems will be $2 million. And then, I really don't understand, nobody seems to, can explain this to me, family aqua park financing, construction, equipment, supplying, and maintaining a family aqua park, $12.5 million. And then, of course, our public building recreation proposal, $7 million, which it was $4.5 million. So the only change is $2.5 million from $24 million to $26.5 million. You know, everybody talks about $7 million or $4.5 million, but I'm reading $24 and $26.5 million, and nobody seems to know anything about this or understand it. Could you explain that to us?
Yeah, would you, would you call that corruption?
Yeah, I think I would call that corruption.
Okay, let me explain. You said that you skipped over section 13, the state statute 13-1024A. What that is, is that kind of outlines the amount that cities of the first class can spend on public projects. And what Article 12, Section 5, in that first paragraph that you said you skipped over, that's basically the home rule exemption. So basically, what we do is we have to charter out, we have the option to charter out with an ordinance, and it just so happens that over the years, each one of those we have chartered out on. So the latest one, the 12.5 that you say goes to family aquatic center?
Well, it says, I just read what it says.
Yeah, we, we've already bonded for that. It's Kenwood Cove is what that is. So really, what we're talking about here is that prior to charter ordinance 38, we had a $1 million limit on what we could do for a public, for a public building as outlined in number D. So in order to get out of D and not mess around with D, we chartered out of, out of letter D into what's now H, which is a public building for recreational purposes. So the bonding authority for that, we're only doing one public building for recreational purposes, and that would be this fieldhouse. And at the time, in November of 2014, it changed that number from $1 million to $4.5 million. And for charter ordinance 39, that was for 38, for 39, we, in anticipation of maybe being a little over $4.5, it was changed a couple of weeks ago to...
Seven.
Seven million. So the, the net effect is this, is that this charter ordinance is cumulative. So we made a change to H, but all of those other, the authority to do all of those other ones has been there since the time that those were chartered.
So that would maybe go back to 37 or 36, other charters?
It would go back to, yeah, whatever. It's already there for all of those. So if we did have some of these things that came up, we wouldn't have to have a new charter ordinance, because we've already chartered out of the state statute on that for these things. So the bonding of this fieldhouse has nothing to do with any of these other projects. We have bonding authority now for... projects. We have bonding authority now for up to 4.5 million. We, with 38, we are chartered, we chartered for 39 for 7 million. But to say that there's something sinister or irregular about this is quite frankly, just not true at all because there's nothing in here that, that
So this bonding, when you, when you get, go for these bonds, you're only going to go for a seven million dollar bond?
We may not even go for 7 million. At 4.5, we may not even go for 4.5. But we have to have authority to go that high in order to bond for that much.
Then why do you, if, the aqua park, has it not already been bonded and?
Mayor, I think I can maybe simplify. Mr. Price, when he said no one could tell him, he didn't ask city staff yet.
Okay.
This will give us an opportunity.
Or elected body people.
What happens is, is in typical ordinances, you would, most of the time you can amend an ordinance or you can repeal an ordinance. But with charter ordinances, I assume it's a statutory provision, but the practice we've always had is, is that you repeal the prior one and you replace it with the new one. So when you do that, the old provisions stay in. The only change is the item that you want to change. So all, all those items are doing is listing the same authorities that are already, that the city's already granted to itself in the past with no intention to use them whatsoever. You could, but there's no reason to. And so it just simply reflects, and I think you were trying to allude to that, it reflects the authority that the city already has for those categories. It doesn't reflect any intention whatsoever to use them because there is no intention, except maybe with roads. Of course, we want to do more roads and bridges and things like that. So there's certain categories you may very well use. But I don't expect we're going to be building another water park anytime soon. I know we're not planning on that and it's very expensive and we don't have the money to do that, so we won't be doing that. So the only change you'll see is that 4.5 to 7 million for the fieldhouse. The rest of the items are just restated because we don't amend. We simply repeal and replace.
So where does the 700,000 come for the sewer that you're doing in front of there now? Is that about 700,000?
Yeah, we already have authority to do the sewer work, utility work.
Would be part of this on the
No, that was, that's not, we didn't bond for that. That was paid for out of our, out of our
Yeah, that's a cash purchase.
Yeah. That was paid for out of, out of an existing fund cash.
So if, if you're going to do this study on the, the cost of the construction, of course, you're going into executive session, you'll probably talk about that. I got, I got my petition back late Friday and I've already got 150 signatures and I haven't, that's me, just me.
Are you, are you being truthful with people that we're not spending 27 million?
Well, you can spend 27 million, I guess, if you wanted to. And if that's the case.
Well, boy, you're going to have to stretch that pretty far in order to get there.
But I, but I wanted to, I wanted to explain.
We're going to build another Kenwood Cove.
Anybody reads this, they don't understand it. So I wanted to explain. That's why I
Well, you know what? Maybe you should learn these things.
That's why I'm here.
Before you go out into public and spout that you know all about it without asking us first.
And who have I spouted to?
Well, you've been on the radio. You've been here.
I asked them, if they know about it.
You were just on the cameras, just saying it. Nobody knows anything about this. We all know about it.
Well, how come, I could ask somebody from the Journal and they don't know about it. I asked somebody from KSL and they don't know about it. KNI and NA people don't, nobody, nobody could have answered the question to me, you know? That's why I came today to ask this question.
Yeah. And, and what I was suggesting was that maybe you go to this source first.
Well, that's, that's, I'm here. And this, this is the first time you've met. And I didn't know if you were going to have a public where I could even come and do it today or not. But I came up and I asked the question. So back to the, back to the spending of the nine million instead of, which would be the 4.5, 4.5 instead of
The seven.
Four and a half and seven.
Not nine.
We're probably going to, we're probably going to have the numbers to bring it to vote. Is that going to, are you going to be able to work on the nine million?
We'll be fine.
Yeah. Or, or, you know, what worries me, here's one of the things that worries me. When you had the meeting for the lighting downtown, it was 1.8 million.
I wasn't on the commission. I can't.
I was, I was here. And it came, it came out as 3 million. And, you know, when they did the fire department over here, it was going to be 1.5 or something. It ended up being about a million more. Everything's always about 40% more than what you say.
Those were, those were change orders. And when we went to the CAMR on fire, on the fire station in particular, we didn't have, we didn't have
Commissioners, real quick, just, he's talking about the street lighting downtown, the LED lighting and the new poles and stuff. Some of you will remember what we did end up doing after we evaluated the wiring. We replaced all the conduit and the wiring throughout the whole downtown. That wasn't the, the part of the original scope. The same project didn't go from 1.8 to 3 million. You had a conscious discussion and decision based on the wiring and decided to upgrade the wiring. That's why your costs went up. So you have all brand-new conduit and wiring throughout the downtown, controllers for the lights. So that's, that's what caused that.
Wasn't figured in at first. And we got everything figured in, but the sewer's not part of this. It had to be done anyway, I guess. And I'm just saying, when it gets done, most, what I've, what my thoughts are, are, I'd say 80 to 90% of the taxpayers that I've talked to in the last three days are not interested in any of this. So it's, it's three people that are making a decision. Should all, should have been brought to a vote, something this big.
Yeah.
That's my thoughts.
Well, statutorily, you can't arbitrarily just take stuff to a vote. You have to follow state law. We follow state law with the city. And so when you do that, you can't just ask the public to go to a vote if state law doesn't require you to do that. And that's, that's why you're elected and that's, that's a representational form of government. And the county commission makes various decisions in the same way, just like that.
We, we made a decision to put the $40 million jail on a vote.
Because you had to.
No, we didn't.
State law for the sales tax?
We weren't, we weren't.
You didn't have to vote on the sales tax?
We could have just, we could have done the 20,000 and just voted on it. We could have done the 40,000, commissioners, two commissioners.
40,000, not 40 million?
I'm sorry. 40 million. We had another plan for 20 million.
There's one thing to authorize debt for a project, but do you believe that you actually had the authority to change the sales tax rate to pay for it?
I didn't say anything about the change.
Well, that's what it was going to take to pay for it, wasn't it?
I didn't say that, no.
So you could have gone with the property tax?
Yeah.
So you were contemplating a property tax?
We, we didn't contemplate. We put it to the public and let them vote on it. That's the best thing to do. Let the public vote on it and then it's their decision.
Yeah. Well, I will say, Commissioners, one of the things, if anybody has questions about that, a lot of times the financial stuff is a little bit complicated. If anybody has questions whatsoever, they contact our office, the Finance Director's office. We'll spend as much time as it takes to take them through because there are different pieces that you have to deal with and it can be complicated, but we'll be happy to do that.
Yeah, I appreciate you making that comment.
We always have. We don't close our doors.
I've had a few citizens that call and ask about some of these things. And, and as I know, the rest of this, the rest of you probably do as well. And, and I think if there are questions that are way outside of our expertise, we generally refer those to city staff.
Appreciate that.
Anyways, thank you.
My name is Jean Smith. I live at 520 East Republic. I've lived here in Salina for 65 years. Salina's my home. I'm not fancy like you guys and I can't speak like Mr. Price. I think he needs a little more respect than he gets because I guarantee you, 70% of Salina does not want this. And it isn't right to just shove it down our throats. I can take a petition. I can get you 1,000 signatures in a couple weeks. This is absolutely, there was a very good, I'm, I know I'm not formal. I'm sorry. There was a nice editorial in the paper from someone a week or so ago that if we want nice things like McPherson has and we want fancy this and fancy, maybe we need to bring some industry in like McPherson has so we have the money to afford that. We, I, I own three homes. I don't have the money to pay taxes for that. This is, this is something nuts. I mean, we built a bicentennial center, so that would be usable. What have we used a bicentennial center for? The dog show, the national dog show that I knew people that came to, they don't come here anymore. I mean, I realize probably that's not a huge income. You guys don't think, but there were lots of people staying in motels from that. And, and thirdly, this has nothing to do with anything, but Kansas Westland built a nice stadium. It's in between, the street in between Westland and the stadium belongs to the city, right? Does nobody ever drive down that street where the drunken sailor painted the yellow stripe? You know, we have, if we're trying to impress people from out of town, have people come, right beside Westland Stadium, right behind Westland College, down Fourth Street, we've got a yellow stripe that looks like a drunken sailor painted. That doesn't reflect good on Salina. And we're talking about building million-dollar things. We can't even paint a street line. Have you seen this? Has, have any of you seen this?
I just had inquired, and I believe that was a temporary stripe due to the construction. It wasn't a typical stripe you would have seen in the past few years. Wasn't something that we painted?
I'll go paint it straight. I mean, if you give me paint, for heaven's sakes, it's been, what, two months? Every time I go to church, there's a drunken stripe all the way. Everybody that comes to Kansas Westland, what do you think they think of us? Those are people from out of town. And I know probably you guys don't think Kansas Westland's anything, but they bring people into town. You know, other people think we're nuts. Anyway.
All right. Well, thank you.
What, what does it take to take, to get a vote on something like this? What, why, on the fieldhouse, why was no, no ordinary nobody asked about it?
Well, as the city manager said, maybe he can even say, say it better than me again, but you want to roll on that?
Well, when you go back about three years ago, when it, when the, when the concept was first brought to the city, there were multiple public meetings, study sessions, meetings in here.
Right. And were there any votes?
By the governing body. One of the things I stated before is, is that state law requires you to use public votes for certain things. And we've, we've asked the, the opinion before. And legally, if, if it doesn't say you're supposed to use a public vote of the electorate to do something, then it goes to the representational government that's elected by the, the city commission, which is elected by the folks in the community. That's their responsibility. You can't, they can't take that and hand it over and ask for the people to vote on something that they're not statutorily authorized to vote on.
And I voted for some of these people, but I didn't think they would decide just to build the Taj Mahal here in Salina. I mean, we, we don't have that kind of money.
That actually is not even a fair representation.
No.
Oh, come on. Salina, you know what we have here.
Well, are, are, do you have anything more you want to add?
No, I'm sorry. No, I don't.
All right. Thank you.
Judy Larson, 2801 Ray Avenue. I need to disagree with the previous speaker. I think John Price gets a lot more respect than what he deserves because based on the research that I have done in his opinions and his actions, they are consistently without foundation and background. And I totally trust our commissioners and our city staff to research things thoroughly and to act in the best interest of the city of Salina, which is not always consistent with the activity of Mr. Price. I really appreciate all the hard work that's gone in to studying this thing, to make it progressive for Salina. And I absolutely think that people need to investigate things more thoroughly before they're told something based on someone's opinion and very little research and a bully pulpit. And I just think that our elected officials work very, very hard in our best interest and it's not always consistent with what goes on. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll, I'll just make this comment. And Ray, you can come on up and, but if you'll give me just one second, I'll let you get started. Just, just to the last two comments is that I've had a number of people that have called me both in favor of and opposed to the rec center. And, and I'll thank them from up here because generally when someone's dealing with you one-on-one and, and you're able to have a, a nice civil conversation with them. And they are truly interested in, in letting you know their opinion, but also interested in knowing how, what your decisions are for either supporting or opposing. I think that it's, it's, it's really the way our representative republic or democracy or however you want it. But it's how a representative government is supposed to work. I think a lot of the coarsening of the discourse is just when people hear things and then automatically form an opinion without bothering. All of our numbers are published to anybody who wants to get ahold of us. And I don't, and I've never heard from a citizen that any commissioners had, have not talked to them or been disrespectful in any way in, in conversation. So I would just urge, as, as, as the city manager did, if you have a financial question on that. But if you have a for or against, whether it's a 30-minute conversation or 15-second comment, we'd just urge you to get ahold of your elected representatives and, and, and let them know what you think. And, and I think you'll find that it'd be generally a pleasant experience and, and one that even if you don't agree with, I think you can walk away and feel like you're, that you're responsibly represented. So saying that, Ray, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioner, Mayor, Ray Hruska, 235 North Santa Fe. The previous person that came up here and talked about, about voting on this issue, about whether they even wanted the fieldhouse. And she pointed out that there was no vote about it. And I think, and maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, you can answer this about bringing a vote to the public and the conditions thereof. Can you, can you explain that a little bit?
I can say that we've had that discussion on certain topics. Oh, I don't know. It probably comes up once every five or six years. And when we ask the question, the response is, is that the public is entitled to vote. Where the state law says the public is entitled to vote, otherwise, the governing body has a responsibility of making the decision as the elected representatives of the community.
Well, would you agree that charter ordinances are a little different than regular ordinances? Because you exempted out certain things under home rule?
No, I would, I, I'll, I'll go ahead and answer that. I, I think that anytime we're doing any ordinance, generally it, it actually works in favor of more public comment because we give people two shots at making a comment on it. And in the case of charter ordinance 39, we gave folks three shots at it because we tabled it.
Excuse me, I didn't hear that. Say it again, please.
On the, which part didn't you hear? The whole?
The last comment.
On charter ordinance 39, there are actually three shots at it because we had a first reading. We had a meeting for a second reading at which time it was tabled. And then we came back a third time for a second reading on it. And, and at that time, it had the, the number had changed on that to a, to a significantly lower number. So, so that people did have an opportunity for input. They did exercise that opportunity. And I think it's a perfect example of a process working. Now, a lot of people that want to now petition that particular decision were nowhere to be found on the third time we met with the second, second reading. And that's perfectly okay because I think all of us are fine with whatever, you know, the process allows for it. And I think we're all perfectly okay with that process occurring. So.
Well, the original question, it was about a vote. Whether the people wanted to vote about this. Nobody got to vote on it. And I'll read you something from the Kansas Constitution.
Okay. Can you make it brief? Because we don't, what, what we're actually here discussing, and I've kind of given a lot of breadth to this, but we're here to be, we're here to discuss and publicly comment, not on a petition vote, but for a change order in the scope of work and
And I understand that process.
For the architect. So, so if you can just maybe tell me what you were going to read and then we'll, then we'll move on.
It's from the state of Kansas Constitution, Section 5, C3.
Okay. I, I, I don't want you to read that. Can you just tell us what your concern is?
Well, I can, it's probably better explained if I just read it.
It's better if it has nothing to do with the amended contract with the architect that we wait till next time and, and
The amended contract guy said that, yeah, that's another part. Anyway, just let me make this quick. The governing body, and that's you guys.
I'd just like you to tell me your comment and then, and if you want to come back.
This is my comment.
If you want to come back next week and talk about this, but let's get this one going.
Well, it's basically about voting on whether or not the people can vote on this issue.
Okay. And I think we've addressed that on a few occasions.
Well, no, you haven't. Because I haven't actually told you why I asked the question.
Okay. Well, I think we've, we've gone over that significantly here.
You gave me the floor. Are you going to take it back?
I am. Yeah.
You're gonna, you're gonna play this game again, huh?
No, I just asked you to make
Every time I come up here, it's basically the same old thing. I gotta ask all the questions and then there's rebuttal. Only your rebuttal, none of mine. That's the same situation happens every time.
Okay.
If you want to read the Constitution of Kansas, and it basically gives the people the right, and you guys the right to bring it to a vote, all you have to do is say yes, I want to bring it to a vote.
Okay.
And that's in the Constitution of Kansas. Now, are you going to follow the law or are you going to just do whatever you want? Tell me. Can you answer that question? I don't think you can because you don't know the answer. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other public comment? Okay. Saying then, we'll bring it up to the commission for action on this item.
I move that we approve Resolution Number 16-73
I move that we approve Resolution Number 16-7328, authorizing the mayor to execute the addendum to modify the agreement with SFS Architecture.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 16-7328, authorizing the mayor to execute the addendum to modify the agreement with SFS Architecture. Is there any further discussion at this time? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four, zero. Okay, that's administration. Do we have other business at this time? Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we recess into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege. For the reason that public discussion of these matters would waive the privilege inadvertently affect the city's interest in the matters and reconvene at 5:10.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second to recess into executive session for 20 minutes and reconvene at 5:10. Any discussion on that? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four, zero, we're in executive session for 20 minutes. Do we have business after?
We do not.
Okay, no business following.
Thank you.